Counsel Capone.
Yeah.
Counsel Delasola.
Here.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Here.
Counsel Hanlon.
Here.
Counsel McGonigal.
Here.
Counsel McKinnon.
Here.
Counsel Politano.
Here.
Counsel Sichetta.
Here.
Counsel Sani.
Here.
Counsel Minelli. Counsel Marquez.
Here.
Ten members present, Mr. President.
Quorum present, I'll stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any, uh, signings?
Mr. Chairman, could we rise, uh, one of our former colleagues, Chickie Clifford, just recently lost his wife, and I think a moment of silence would be appropriate.
Sure, I'll stand, please. Moment of silence. Do we have anything on the, uh...
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion made second, uh, total public hearing, all in favor? Opposed?
Item number one is a petition to our person's interest in a petition for an auto repair mechanical body for Bono Incorporated DBA Pro Truck Collision Repair in 99 Bow Street.
Uh, Michael Bono is here.
Uh, sorry, might as well just let the public carry it.
But you have to, uh...
Uh, Ms. Bono, would you like to speak first? Or would you like to wait till we have... Uh, Ms. Bono will come first, motion made there, uh, Ms. Bono will come before us, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Mike, there's a switch on the one on your right, and there's a press button on the one on your left. Ms. Bono, uh, could you describe what we're, uh, petitioning today for, please?
It's for a auto mechanics and, uh, auto body license, uh, it's currently a mechanic shop right now, they've closed down and, um, just took over the property there.
Have any questions for Ms. Bono at this time? Uh, Mr. Hanlon, uh, Counsel Hanlon.
99 Bow Street is a familiar address to me, and I, I just, I can't fix out the location, where is it?
It's, it's on the corner of Beecham Street, it was Everett Truck Repair.
Okay, good, okay, thank you, it's a big facility.
Yes.
I mean, it's a big area, yeah, okay.
Do you have any more questions?
Just hours of operation?
Uh, I think it was like seven to seven, I believe.
Five, six days a week?
Uh, six days, no Sundays.
No Sundays, okay.
Any questions for that petitioner? Uh, seeing none, this part of the, uh, public hearing is over, we'll open it up. Uh, excuse, uh, thank you. At this time of the public hearing, we will ask if, uh, people in favor of this petition, uh, three times, and ask for people who oppose this petition three times. At this time, I'd like to ask anybody, are they in favor of this petition? Are they in favor of this petition? Are they in favor of this petition? Seeing none, that part of the public hearing is over. Is anybody opposed to this position, petition? Is anybody opposed to this petition? Is anybody opposed to this petition? That's three. Seeing none, that part of the public hearing is over, the matter's before you. Yes.
All paperwork is in order.
Fable action. Fable action.
Motion made, uh, favorable action, roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Politano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, petition has passed, and, uh, good luck down there, Mike, good luck. Uh, clerk Reed, uh...
Uh, motion to suspend the rules, and, uh, for the present, uh, the presentation to the outgoing president.
Motion made, and second to suspend the rules, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. The senior most member.
I'd like to actually, um, say a few words, uh, for the body here. Michael, you, you've done a great job, uh, this year, you're the, uh, made history, you're the, uh, president of the unicameral system that we have now. Uh, it was a tough year, we were all learning, and, uh, I think we, with your guidance, we, uh, we did a, a pretty good job this year, so, um, I'd like to present you with the, the gavel and, um, little token from all of us on the council. And, let me read it. Whereas Michael K. Marquez has served the city council for year 2014 as its president, and whereas in the performance of his duties as president, he has ever been actuated by a spirit of fairness and a desire to maintain harmonious relationships between himself and the members, and whereas his efforts in this direction have won for him the respect and goodwill of his fellow members, thereby enabling him to, uh, at all times, to maintain the dignity of his office, therefore, it be resolved that, in full recognition of his valued service, especially this year, of a unicameral legislation engrossed copy of this testimony will be presented to Michael K. Marquez.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to say that this was the biggest honor that's been bestowed upon me in my life, it's been an honor to serve you people and to be the first president of the unicameral, uh, government, uh, which, um, Counsel McKinnon said, um, being here twenty, just about twenty years involved in Everett government, uh, I'm as excited about the prospects of Everett now as I was twenty years ago, and I'm also proud of the city of Everett as I've been twenty years ago now. I hope to, uh, stay on board, I'd like to see, uh, Everett grow, uh, I see it could be in the right direction, we'll find out, uh, where we're heading with Lower Broadway, but it's, it's gonna be an exciting time in Everett, and, uh, it's funny, I'm here twenty years, and I know Mr. Hanlon's been here a couple, a couple of more years, I have, and Mr. Chet hasn't been here as long as I, but we all share the enthusiasm of Everett, and, uh, I'd just like to, uh, see it to the final stage where we change over from that heavy industrial city to the, for a little more cosmetic area, you know, the stores and the, uh, the, something that's, the next generation will benefit from, and that's, that's what we have to look for. Sometimes we sit back, we, uh, we're a little stubborn, we don't wanna see things change, but change is good, and, uh, whenever changing, it's gonna be a greater city than it is right now, and it just, you know, my family's proud, and I wish my parents were alive sometimes to see this, especially seeing from this person what he's achieved, and I think they'd be shocked, but thank you very much, I love yous all, and I love the city of Everett, and, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate, God bless you, and, uh, have a Happy New Year, thank you very much.
Mr. President, I, Senator Saldi Domenico's here, could, could we invite him up?
Second motion.
Motion made second to invite, uh, Senator Saldi Domenico, uh, up, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one better be. On the stairs.
I know, we need some, you're right, I'm out of breath, I can't talk. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you to the members, I'll be very brief to carry on with your meeting, I just wanna congratulate Counsel President Mike Marquez on a successful term as president, I have a Senate citation signed by myself, and this is the last citation, yours and Representative-elect McGonigal's citation, the last two she's signed as, as the Senate President, so, this means something down the road, hopefully, but I appreciate it, congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. The Chili's, do you have any, uh, showman? Okay, put, you have one more. So, thank you very much. So, thank you, ladies. What?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, a motion of privilege. Okay, what do we have? I'd like to get the alarm to be shut off, but, uh, I'd like to make a motion that the councils stand up and have a picture taken with our president, because I know...
I'd love to.
I know we have a very fine photographer in the audience, and our two clerks, Michael and John, also to join us. Owen, call Cal.
Do you have a quick motion to, uh, five-minute recess? Motion made second for five-minute, not recess, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Yeah. Nice. Close round, guys, open. I'm three, I'm three, Michael. One, two, three. One more.
I'm sorry to make your time. Make a motion to open public participation.
Motion made second to open public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, do we have any signings?
No, unless there was one now.
Motion made second to, uh, close public participation, all in favor? I oppose, clerk, uh, I believe Reed from the, uh, item three.
Item number three is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael K. Marquez as president to accept donations totaling $5,500 to the Office of Human Services Christmas and Emergency Programs as follows, $5,000 from the Everett Cooperative Bank, and $500 from Elizabeth Jones.
Fable action on the... Get a letter of thanks.
Yep. Motion made in second to, uh, accept these generous donations, also to send a letter of thanks. Roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Politano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President. Counsel DeFlorio. Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, like I said, a letter for thanks and Merry Christmas from these, uh, very generous, uh, programs. Uh, clerk, uh, Reed, Counsel Hanlon.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to make a request that we, uh, pull our clerk and ask if questions, uh, items four through ten, uh, in all in good order?
All in good order, they're all renewed.
All renewed and all set?
Yes.
Say, make a motion, we take four through ten collectively, vote as one vote, clerk to read the calendar, though.
Second motion.
Yep, motion made to, uh, take items four to ten collectively, all in favor? Uh, roll call vote.
Item number four, second-class motor dealer, Elson Alves, DBA Affordable Auto Mechanic, 83 Vine, second-class motor dealer, Joe Caruso, DBA Caruso Automotive, 49 Robbins Street, second-class motor dealer, Richard J. Sully, DBA Parkway Motor Sales, 2034 Revere Beach Parkway, second-class motor dealer license, Ibrahim Elrihan, DBA Regal Auto Sales, 1,800 Revere Beach Parkway, second-class motor dealer, Romulo Aguado, DBA Supreme Cars, 3 Everett Ave. Uh, petition for first and second-class motor dealer license from Gene Giacchino, DBA Honda Cars of Boston, 100 Broadway, and a first and second-class motor dealer license from Ralph Severndulog, RC Realty Trust, DBA BMW Motorcycles of Cambridge Incorporated, DBA Parkway Cycle at 1,865 Revere Beach Parkway.
Motion made, uh, favorable action, roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon. Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Politano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Yes, all these licenses have been renewed. Uh, clerk, read item eleven.
Item number eleven, there's a resolution sponsored by Counsel Rosa DeFlorio, the administration consider looking into parking meters, so the people can pay what ATM cards similar to what other cities and towns have installed.
Uh, Counsel DeFlorio.
Uh, Mr. President, could we please, uh, lay this over to the next meeting, unfortunately, Richard Biscay had, uh, a death in his family, and, uh, he's not here, so, I make a motion to lay it over to the next meeting.
Just like, uh, just, uh, just like a quick word on these, I was at, uh, Medford the other day, and they had put these in, very complicated, 'cause you gotta put the license plate numbers, a lot involved in it, I've seen where they've made them easier, where you'd have, you would have a designated number, pocket number, you'd put, you know, parking lot forty-two in the amount in an hour's, yeah, but the ones in, in Medford are, are different, 'cause even more, let's put your license plate number in, it's...
Yeah. No, we're looking at the other ones, did, Lowell has them, you just put the parking, there's numbers?
Number, you have to number, you have to number the city, obviously, uh, and that motion was to, uh, lay this on the table, uh, to the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Motion made to lay this, um, piece on the table to, uh, next meeting, all in favor? I oppose, it's been, uh, laid over for the next meeting, uh, clerk, read item twelve.
Item number twelve is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael K. Marquez as president to amend zoning warrants by adding a new section thirty-one registered medical marijuana dispensaries, as amended, with recommendation of favorable action, as further amended, enrolled, sent back for ordainment.
Fable action, the order?
Motion, motion made, and, uh, second favorable action, a roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Politano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, this, uh, ten yeas, this has been, uh, ordained, clerk, read item, uh, thirteen.
Item number thirteen is an order sponsored by Counsel Marquez as president to amend the order to the city of Everett, we adding new section to Chapter seventeen, section seventeen dash six A, removal of snow from sidewalks, enrolled as amended, it is up for ordainment.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for ordainment as amended.
Motion made second, uh, for dammit, uh, roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon. Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Politano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
That, that's, uh, he says been ordained. Uh, clerk, read item fourteen.
Item number fourteen is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Fred Capone, who represented from City's Refuge Collection Contract, appear next city council meeting to discuss a remedy to the haphazard placement of refuse containers following collection.
Uh, Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, is there anyone here from Capital East? All right, I would request that we lay this over to our first formal meeting in January with another request that someone appear.
Okay, uh, motion made to lay this on the table to the, uh, first, uh, meeting in January, and, uh, request that he, excuse me? Oh, first formal meeting, which should be the twelfth, okay, for the first formal meeting, and, uh, that I, representative of that time be present to answer questions, all in favor? I oppose, uh, clerk, read item fifteen.
Item number fifteen is an order sponsored by Counsel Marquez as president, city council, the city of Everett accepts chapter fifty-three, section ninety-eight of the Mass General Laws, relative to having the official guidelines on the process of obtaining blank nomination papers. This is the first time you see in the Senate House, or needs to be laid over.
So this has to...
Quick explanation is...
Could we have an explanation, I know this has to get laid over to the next meeting, is that correct?
Right, yeah, the quick explanation is, what it will do is, uh, any city or town that accepts this, the last day for getting blank nomination papers will be two days before the day they, final day that they have to be filed with the registrars, so if someone doesn't come in that morning, and every time they come in that morning, it's, it's haphazard and the signature's not all that good, you know what I mean, so, it sets a deadline for obtaining papers, which is two days prior to the last day to put them in. Okay?
So make a motion to refer this to the next meeting?
Motion made second.
Sure.
Okay, so the motion dealt there is to, um...
Refer it to next meeting.
Motion made to refer to the next organized meeting, and have a copy of, um, chapter fifty-three, section ninety-eight available to us, all in favor? I oppose?
Item number sixteen is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Fred Capone, Peter Ray, and Politano, Carmel Ban, Heavy Trucking, on that portion of Second Street between Route sixteen and Broadway is unnecessarily disrupts the neighborhood and negatively impacts public safety.
Uh, Counsel Capone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but this isn't a new piece, I know this is something that, uh, the neighborhood in some of the council members have been working on for quite a few years, the unfortunate situation is that it's in the hands of the state, so there's only so much we can do at the city level, uh, the reality is, from Revere Beach Parkway to Broadway, that section of Second Street is a glorified cutthroat, there's absolutely no reason for any heavy trucking to be going down that area, it's just a means of avoiding the, the rotary, maybe getting to another location a little quicker, unfortunately, what that does is it compromises public safety, and it's, uh, it's doing a number on the road, uh, Second Street, I'm calling almost weekly to fill potholes, um, it, it makes it, uh, trucks coming off of Broadway to go on the Second Street can't make that turn, we've got cars parked on the southern side of Second Street, it's two-lane traffic, and you've got a tough swing in the square, so when a truck tries to make that turn, it's either blocking up traffic at a minimum, or it's taking out that corner street light, and I've seen that street light taken out two or three times, so it's, it's just a difficult and an unsafe turn from that point of view, and with the potholes, it's costing the city money and resources to constantly fill potholes because of the, the heavy weight of the vehicles going down there, and for the unfortunate residents on Second Street, when those trucks come by at all hours of the morning and the evening, once it hits a pothole, you know what a heavy truck sounds like when it hits a pothole, so it's shaking people's houses, so, for all of those reasons, I would like to refer this to our state senator, our state rep, and our state rep-elect, Joe McGonigal, to see what, if anything, we can do, working with our state officials, in order to alleviate some of the concerns and issues for the city and for the residents of Second Street, so I put that in the form of a motion.
Second motion.
Counsel Capone, I, I spoke with our city clerk, Matt Rouse, so he said he'd like to send to him, so he can find out the process and then come back, maybe the next meeting, what it...
Yeah, there is a process, and, yeah, and I don't know with the Traffic Commission, how that process stands now, but whatever it is, I'll find out the process and start it on its way, or recommend an order if it needs it, when it comes back.
So can we make that motion?
Sure, I amend that motion, I would throw my first motion, or amend it, uh, so that we refer this to the city clerk for clarification, and have, uh, an answer back at our next meeting, next formal meeting.
Motion made second to refer it to the city clerk for the next meeting for interpretation of laws, and, uh, how maybe we can get by and get it done, all in favor? Opposed? Clerk, read.
Item number seventeen is maintenance request, with note of rule seventeen to city council. Uh, there's one item, sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez, it places slow children sign on Woodlawn Street from Garland, all the way down to Nichols, refer it to Kevin Nuna, City Services Director.
Make a motion to refer to the City Services Department, Kevin Nuna.
Motion made second to refer to the, uh, public service in our department, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. And before, before, before we adjourn, I'd like to go around in favor, I'd like to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy, uh, Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, whatever holidays there are, you have a chance to get up and, uh, give a couple of little speeches, would never like to stand up?
You don't have to stand up.
You don't have to stand up, you can sit down if you want.
Mr. Chairman, I, actually, Counsel Delasola just... Wow, these are a little sensitive this evening, huh? Counsel Delasola just made an excellent, uh, point, I believe this is the last formal meeting of, uh, state rep-elect.
That was gonna be our finale.
Okay, then, I'll let you do it your way then, we're gonna sit back then, you got it under control.
If anybody would like to say, uh, Merry Christmas at this time, just, uh, Counsel DeFlorio?
We'd like to wish the entire city of Everett a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, and God bless you.
Thank you. Counsel McKinnon.
Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and everyone be safe.
Uh, Counsel Politano.
Ditto.
Ditto.
Merry Christmas.
Counsel Sichetta.
No, I want really one of the residents of Everett a Happy Holiday, Merry Christmas.
Nice with the ditto. Counsel Sichetta.
I wish all the, uh, citizens of Everett Happy Holidays.
Uh, Counsel Hanlon.
The same, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year to all the residents of the city of Everett, as you have stated, Mr. Chairman, we're in for some new things happening, and this might be the year to see it really starting, so...
Be an exciting time, you said.
Happy New Year to everybody.
Uh, Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, at the risk of being repetitive, uh, I think... I think you actually stated it best at the very beginning.
Yep.
Whatever it is that you celebrate, you know, wish you a happy season, God bless everyone, Happy and Safe and Healthy New Year to us all.
Counsel Delasola, you can use a ditto on that, we, we have one on the right side.
I don't wanna copy him, uh, Happy Holidays to everybody in Everett, have fun with your family and friends and cherish your moments, thank you.
Counsel Sani.
Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and everyone be safe.
And at this time, for me, I'd like to reiterate everything that you all said, and, you know, I like said, we all love us, and it's why we do this, and at this time, Mike, you wanna say something, or, uh, I'll have to read you a quote tonight on, uh, Facebook about three in the morning, but what would you like to say right now?
I know.
Yeah.
I know. No, Merry Christmas to everybody, and, uh, you know, just take this time to do something really good for somebody else, and really pass on the, the Christmas spirit.
And at this time, um, we don't, we're losing, uh, one of our, uh, councils here, which we're all proud of, Joe, and I'm really proud of, you know that, and at this, and at this time, I'd like to have Mr. McGonigal come up here and, uh, give us a farewell speech. Fear, fear, farewell here and to greater things. Can't one day, when I'm seeing Governor DiDomenico, Lieutenant Governor McGonigal, maybe I'll finally get a job from one of these guys, twenty years.
I don't know about that, but, uh... Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. President, my colleagues, as you know, tonight is my last meeting as a member of the city council, right here in these chambers, and I leave with mixed emotions, saddened to no longer be a member of this body, but excited to face a new challenge and an opportunity to serve the people of Everett as their next state representative. This is not a goodbye, for I will surely see you all again.